Okay, are we rolling?
Yes.
Okay, everybody. Welcome to Smithfield Township Board of Supervisors work session. It's August 12th, 2020, a lovely day outside. It's 4:00 PM.
4:07.
Precisely 4:07 PM. Let's write that down. Okay, present are myself, Robert Lovenhahn, Vice Chairman, Jacob Pride, Assistant Secretary, is that what we call it?
Yes, that's my title.
Julia, I always pronounce this the Finnish version.
Helika.
Okay, anyway, we're here. Chairman Brian Barrett is not, but will conduct the business we have to do this afternoon. Minutes, we have no minutes from last meeting. Public comments on the agenda? None of those. All right, new business. This one, I'm not sure what we're supposed to do on it, but it's about the signal service light that will be put in at Smithfield Gateway, we hope, at some point. And I think we're just looking at the specs here and saying that it should be a NasTech ATC light manufactured by Traffic Clear. Other than that, I think it's just an advisory. Am I right in that?
Seems to me it looks like something that we just would like to make PennDOT aware of, given that, I guess, we've switched our other systems, our other signals.
Right.
To that system.
Right.
So we'd like it to at least match those.
Right. And one of the reasons is that the green light go grant that we won from PennDOT, which has now been rescinded by PennDOT, called for lights all the same. And all of those lights were manufactured so that we could use the Traffic Clear system. And all of the engineering was done and before construction could begin, PennDOT yanked the grant claiming they had no money. We won't comment on that. Anyway, shall we move along to the second item on the agenda? The one and only Dr. Khan is here with us to discuss ideas about his property on Route 447 Independence Road.
So it's about time to do something.
Shall we have him up here like we did last night just so?
If he wants to.
Why don't you bring your chair around right over here? Just take one of the small chairs.
Okay.
Just bring it over.
Yeah, if she'd like to be on camera.
Yeah.
We applied for a grant for a new setup, but obviously that's.
Here would you like me to be?
Right about.
Yes, close.
Right here?
Come in a little further, a little further. Okay. Let's see if we can see.
Yeah, that'll be good.
Very good.
Turn on my phone.
As long as you don't block Jake if you're. Anyway, the floor is yours.
So I know we had discussed a couple of times and I got some email responses back and forth. That was very nice that too. My goal is to get somewhere with this property. It's been sitting for almost.
Our job is to help you do something with it.
Yeah. So the best options we talked about is the putting some apartments. And I know you're kindly the per the idea of pharmacy.
Have a what?
I think I had gotten one email in terms of what about pharmacy there, having a pharmacy like CVS.
Oh, right, right, right. It's a, it's a possibility only because I don't think there is one anywhere near there.
Yeah, the only pharmacy is on 209.
Right.
Way on the other side of the town.
And yet you have a medical corridor.
Yeah, yeah. So I floated that idea. I've gone to CBRE and I've gone to JLL and all those folks have connected me with the CVS people. I've engaged RF from doing engineering to do the feasibility and do some initial drawing.
Great.
How that will fit. And obviously will be two structures. One will be the apartment structure, which is in the existing footprint. And then the second structure will be the pharmacy.
Or if you would like, remember, mixed use has now been approved with our new enterprise zone.
Sure.
You could, you could build one or two buildings, whatever you want, but build apartments above or any combination like that would be fine.
Sure.
You may even want a small market, who knows? Dry cleaner, there's no dry cleaner around there either.
Yeah.
There's a lot of possibilities.
So the ideally, I will also engage Baxter, Michael Baxter's, spoke to him because he's local to get understanding if that is the case, dry cleaners, market or whatever, having something of that nature. And the question is, who are the folks who will want to come there?
Who are the what?
Who will be the folks who will want to come there, the merchants? So we need to find those merchants. So that's why I'm asking Baxter's help.
Well, I would also say that as Smithfield Gateway develops, that whole area is going to be much more of a focus for people to come for various reasons.
Right.
If you look at the retail that's around there, the only thing that's near there is on Milford Road across from the Weiss Market, there's a couple of strip malls, which are in terrible condition, which are difficult to reach and.
Near, near the property on the other side.
I'm talking about on Milford Road as it, it goes north from the intersection of Cortlandt Street and Milford Road. It's the nearest area to there where there's any retail. And what is there? There's a series of small stores that exist because the rents are very cheap.
Right.
But there's, there's really nothing that's a first class place to shop, whether it's, whether it's a market, whether it's a specialty market, whether it's a pharmacy. I mean, you go through the list.
Right.
It just doesn't exist and yet we're hoping with Smithfield Gateway and maybe with what you're doing, if you build mixed use, you've got a captive audience for retail right there.
Sure. Have any of, any of these merchants approach you to be in this area or have?
No, no one's approached us. But remember, our ordinance that allows so much more flexibility in commercial zones, was only passed a few weeks ago.
Yeah, on the 28th.
So nobody really is, is gotten around to understanding that it's, it's available yet.
Sure.
We're kicking around ways to promote it.
Sure.
In a formal manner.
Okay.
Sort of booklet, you know, some sort of promotion to encourage it.
Can you expand it to me what changes have you made and what how that would be?
Okay. He's better at this.
So, you know, the gist of it is that allows for greater flexibility and really encourages, you know, mixed use development. Essentially, it establishes some sort of design guidelines based on square footage. It allows some variation in height. And essentially allows you more flexibility on one property. You don't necessarily need to do one thing or two things. You could do multiple uses in the same spot and be fine.
I see.
And it replaces a whole bunch of districts. We had a B2 district, a B1 district, commercial district.
Right.
Everyone had rules that were both unique to the district and, and didn't disallow other uses. Now it's all one thing. So you can say that anything that's a commercial area, you can pretty much do what you want.
Okay.
It's, it's a new concept called form-based zoning, which is pretty much if it fits, it's okay.
All right. And it allows for some changes in the zoning process that I think are designed to make it somewhat easier. At the same time, we're also upgrading, you know, the permitting system to allow for online submissions and things like that.
That's great, that's great. So, I mean, let's say if we don't find any of these merchants who can come, then what?
Well.
How do we make it work that?
I think you get the merchants and then you build.
Yeah. I'm just saying, we have to get the merchants to commit and how big of a mixed use will appropriate to trigger these second phase of the apartments.
Well, again, we don't know any of this, it's too new, but what we suspect is that we are very deficient in, let's call it first, first-class apartment dwellings that are appealing to a younger clientele.
Right, certainly people my age and, you know, until they're, you know, 30 or even, you know, early 30s.
Gen X, Gen Y.
They don't want to buy a home.
Sure.
Immediately, not all of them do. And a lot of them also, you know, you can do different studies, but I think the whole luxury apartment thing is, it works in some spots, but I also think that if we want people to stay here, particularly those that, you know, are getting educated at ESU or MCTI in North Hampton.
Right.
There's kind of very little apartments available to them at any price range.
Sure, sure, sure.
And look, there's another possibility, which I think we would approve, which is retail, office and residential in the same buildings.
Right.
And I think we're going to see a need for regional offices for businesses too, especially since I don't think that Manhattan is going to recover to be the same center that it was before. And maybe that businesses there have regional offices all around the area where people can either work or report to. So who knows?
Yeah, so, you know, I mean, one of the things, if we create an office space, which is 5,000 square foot, each people can rent. And then at the present time, our footprint for the building was, for two floors, 70,000 square foot for the hospital. And then we had at the bottom basement, kind of lofted out basement type of services or lab and things of that nature. It was another 15 or 20, 15 or 10,000 square foot. I think it was close to about 90,000 square foot. So what I'm looking at is possibility that one can create in that space something, or if there's a CBS world, they're going to want outside and drive through, things of that nature. That's what RF is doing and then I can put that in front of the developers.
Yes, I remember you have plenty of land there.
Yeah, yeah.
How many acres is it?
I think it's about 10 point something.
Certainly have multiple structures, multiple large structures even and be fine.
Yeah.
You know, have a courtyard complex, you know, that could be something like that. You know, that area is becoming more popular now with.
Sure.
You know, the restaurant, the pub 447 that's there.
That's across the street.
Yeah, I know. I mean, it's a perfect spot because for young people, Terragreen Golf Course is right across the street.
Right.
The pub is there now.
Well, Terragreen Golf Course, we're hoping will become an aquatic center for the whole area.
Right. Until that come, it's still a very attractive place.
Yep. Absolutely. And it's only gonna, only going to grow.
Sure. So my top process was the other like now is the two floors. So I think, I'm not sure how high the height wise, we have approximately, I think 34 or 35 feet.
I think 35.
35. So if we need to get three floors for apartments, it will be about 37 minimum.
Well.
37 feet.
Gateway has, has gone above that. I think it's up to 40, isn't it? I can't remember.
Yes, the building, the height maximum, if I'm looking in the right space, is just looking at the ordinance, the maximum, the minimum height for the first floor is 15 and then, okay, 51120C. Let me see what that is for the maximum building height, because there's, there's a couple of different options that even allow the, the board of supervisors to actually add footage depending on the different uses. But in the ED zone of, for the, a lot of the structures, it seems to be the building height can be 40 feet, but I think there's provisions to where it can go even higher with, with board approval.
Yeah. So my top process was if we can get to three floors, create a clubhouse, create a very amenities for the folks and have a, what is that, secure building, where the folks have get together place, they can have outside visible inside amenities, some workout area and maybe a roof deck.
Why not?
For people to sit.
So the, in section C, 511C, this building height is limited to 40 feet, provided however the board of supervisors may permit the increase of the building height by 10 feet for each additional 10 feet of front yard, provided not to exceed a maximum building height of up to 60 feet.
Right. So we have gotten up to that.
Okay.
Yeah. So that's.
You could build our first skyscraper.
Do you have the fire trucks for that?
Well, and that's actually part of the consideration there is that they have to be reviewed and approved by the fire chief and emergency services.
You need a new fire trucks.
Thank you.
Right. And there's, and there's sprinkling requirements and whatnot that were added because of feedback on, on the gateway project from chief releasing.
It's possible.
Right.
Before, nothing was possible. Now everything's possible.
Good. So, you know, I'm going to talk to RF. So if we propose like, let's say 5,000 square foot of office space and about three-story building, using the same footprint, don't change the footprint, but we get three floors instead of two floors. Because for the hospital, we had to have at least, I think, 15 or 16 foot for the two floors. To put in between the ducts, works and stuff.
Well, so now you've got all kinds of possibilities.
Okay.
And what's best? I don't know. It's a new era here.
Okay.
It's, it's new in a lot of ways. Even when I talk about offices, who knew eight months ago that the offices in New York City would be empty? And they probably are not going to fill up again ever like they were.
There could be satellite offices here that allow for more social distancing.
Yeah. But also it's a shared office to be created, so like 5,000 square foot of shared space. People can come and use, you know, who are living there, maybe they're working in New York or whatever, not.
Certainly.
And they can share space.
Absolutely.
Like.
Like we work. Like we work almost, yeah.
I guess all we're saying is. Whatever direction you want it to go, we'll help you with it and we'll encourage it.
Wonderful. Well, I think in IFP's CBS and those folks, they don't go with it because depending upon what they do and look at it. I have contacts now at the highest level, who are the brokers. So I am going to be proposing that with the artist structure, what he puts up on your paper. Uh if that doesn't work, then I guess the second option I'm looking at is if we look at five thousand square foot of shares face like we work.
Right.
That might be another.
And and remember this, you're on a medical corridor which keeps building. There's a lot of people that work there. Where do they live?
Yeah, of course, you know, the people are medical assistants or whatever.
And you're also near ESU, where do they live?
Sure, I mean, they're not very good options around. You can create more so which has. Shared space of like workout and.
Exactly, people like amenities and they're they're willing to forego.
Right.
A single family dwelling if it means they can have, you know. All sorts of amenities.
Sure, so the goal will be is like one bedroom, two bedroom, fifty fifty and then. Have that space, about thousand square foot.
Sure.
Apartment. That's my vision.
And I think the only thing that would be questionable in this whole. Area would be just to have enough of a buffer between where whatever we're doing or you're doing in. Uh the residents in East Strasburg that are behind, but there's certainly. There's a lot of land there and there's a lot of possibilities for landscaping and trees and so forth that would. Would mitigate any problems or.
Sure.
Light spillage or.
Yeah, yeah, no, I think we we did the when we did the hospital. Because we're gonna use the same footprint and we have, so now obviously obliged by those. Parameters to be have enough buffer.
Sure.
So, yeah, I think the only good thing would be is we'll have space left if we need to do anything further.
Absolutely.
Propose in those spaces.
So, let us know how we can help you.
So I will talk to Art. I'm gonna have him do the CBS issue and now on the apartment side, use the same footprint. And then second option I'm gonna have him do is look at five thousand square foot office space. Between that and that and also the apartments. But that will also allow us to have extra space just in case in the future we can add more.
Absolutely.
So that would be the goal we'll look at.
Excellent.
So, any issues from Strasburg for EDUs or whatever now from the borough? If you do that type of protection, I know that was one of your limitation before.
Right.
You have limited EDUs.
Um, I I wouldn't know specifically because I I suppose that that heads up to East Strasburg, but.
Yeah.
Terry at our sewer authority would would know more and and the current contacts for for them, but. Certainly the trend has been if there needs to be an upgrade, that they like to either cost share or have some sort of upgrade, but. Certainly, I think that there's certainly room to to work with East Strasburg. If 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 they had any issues, but we certainly have contacts there and and here.
And to talk about the apartments, I know the the others other project, they're also building some lucky apartments.
Yes, they plan to build up to five hundred.
Wow.
At 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 Gateway.
Okay, how far is that? That's right off of four nine, right?
Right, it's right on the ninety, on the Moser property.
Okay.
So they're they're still planning that, they have to get a storm water pipe hookup and. Begin road improvements, then their plan is to begin construction relatively soon on one of their first tenants.
Wonderful, wonderful. I'm down to promote the.
Oh, certainly, with both projects, you know, coming to the fore, that'll certainly. You know, to, you know, be a very good sign that, you know, Smithfield is indeed a, you know, a happening place. I can say that. From our realty transfer taxes, those have been up this year as compared to previous years, so. I think that beyond this and then past the pandemic, the growth is going to continue, especially because of projects like yours.
I see, and have you seen, as you mentioned, that there is not good apartment places for young people to live? What type of research have you guys done from that point of view, any kind of studies here?
Um, I I, we haven't done any studies ourselves, but I know that. Uh Smithfield Gateway, they've done quite a few studies. I'm not sure who they engaged, but. Certainly, anecdotally, when you ask people my age and my friends, you know. They they don't see any place to to stay here, you know, aside from, you know, homeowners association or something, which which they don't want. They want to be able to. Get some sort of a start in the apartment or or something like that, because otherwise their their plan really is to just leave.
Leave.
Either go to New York City or or uh New Jersey suburbs, stuff like that.
Okay.
But I think this is also anecdotally, but I'll mention that when I went to. My cousin's high school graduation in June. About half of the students this year are going to either East Strasburg University or or North Hampton. So it seems like more people are staying, probably because of the the pandemic at the moment, but.
Right.
It provides a really good opportunity to present them a reason to stay after.
Sure, sure. Particularly the hospital is here too, so nothing's to happen, those people. If they're moving farther away, they have to just come two miles from there.
Absolutely.
There's not too many options for the apartments there.
No.
Generally, good.
Absolutely.
I I think we sub, we suffer from too many substandard apartments and not enough of. Uh not only nice apartments, but apartments that would appeal to younger renters.
Okay.
Just don't have it.
I see, all right. So I would like to follow up to Art's feasibility.
Sure.
And come back and present.
Look, keep in contact with us. You 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 appear and disappear. We'd like you to keep.
Yeah, I I know we, and basically what we have done is now, I refinanced my hospital building. Uh we have taken out significant chunk of money out of that. Now I'm building sixty apartments on that, on the that part of the land. Uh we have another project which I'm looking to do another sixty up from the country.
Oh, okay.
So, and then this this land is what I've been trying to sell and whatever, and I might as well move forward.
Absolutely, it's a great chance to do it, uh it's low interest rates and.
Yeah.
Better zoning now, it's it's coming together.
So, if we can do something of that nature, if we don't get the other option and create a five thousand square foot office space. You know, which can be filled whenever.
Yeah, absolutely.
We can see with that. Good.
Just just do it while we're in office.
My my NPD has permit is until twenty four.
Very good, very good.
I need to move forward.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Khan.
Oh, goodness.
You too.
Moving right along, we we have an interview called Discussion on Work Sessions. I don't know what that is, except to say that. I guess we've decided to advertise them.
Well, so that's the discussion part. But first, just confirming that we are skipping over Experiment Mills Eco Village because there are no references present. Okay, um so the just the discussion on the work sessions. We attended a meeting on, you know, the basics of the Sunshine Act, and one of the things that they brought up. Is that in a public meeting, if you have it advertised as a work session, even if it's a public meeting. Um for the Board of Supervisors, you shouldn't be taking any action or voting anything on anything. Obviously, this is a bit of a concern because we voted on stuff, so I reached out to our solicitor Ron Karasak. Um and it's his opinion that we are still good to go. Um because when you look at the section of the Sunshine Act that they reference, which for the people listening, uh is seven oh seven, section C. Certain work sessions, the definition is boards of auditors. May conduct working sessions not open to the public for the purpose of examining, analyzing, discussing and delivering various accounts and records. With respect to which boards are responsible, so long as official action of a board with respect. To such records and accounts is taken at a meeting open to the public and subject to the provisions of this chapter. Um so is it, so it is our solicitor's opinion that we are fine to carry on our work sessions as we need to and that we don't need to readvertise them as. Regular meetings, um but it was also his opinion that we make you aware that we've had this discussion. And just kind of leave it up to you if you want to, we can readvertise, but it says opinions.
This is Eric.
Okay.
I wonder if this is our.
Yes, thank you very much. I understand at least half of what you said. Hi, guys, come on in.
How you doing?
Good, have a seat.
No, so we'll just, are you guys okay with us maintaining work sessions as our work sessions or would you like us to readvertise them as our regular business meetings? To summarize, um our solicitor thinks we're fine to continue operating as we are.
I'm okay as we are, you okay?
If Ron's okay with as we are, then 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 I'll be okay with it, but I do think it should be something that. We potentially talk about the reorganization next uh next year in case we want to come up with a better name as to not confuse.
Uh moving right along before we move back, talking about motions, I'd like to just move the E to get this out of the way. I'm gonna make a motion to the appointment to engage the services of Fisher and Fisher Appraisals. To conduct a certified fair market appraisal of Anthony Mela Cio's. Two seventy four Marshalls Creek Road property and structures at a cost of five hundred dollars. Sorry, you have a second?
Uh I'll second the motion and then let me ask a question.
Yes.
Is this, um, this is the one that has demolition and. And the fair market appraisal, right? Does it include both?
It it includes a, an estimate of of a of demolition, but as he advised us, he said, look. We can look up the charts and tell you what it might be, but the only way to really know is to engage. Somebody who's an expert in it like Possenger and have them do a hazmat survey, so they will really know.
Okay.
So you you have a second, right?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried, done. Okay, let's move backwards. Who do we have here, gentlemen? You introduce yourself.
I'm Eric Weiss and.
Yeah, Cameron McIntosh, nice to meet you all.
Nice to meet all of you.
I'm a builder that's hoping to work with Eric on this project.
Okay.
We specialize in material.
There's been a lot of discussion, it's Weiss or White or.
White.
W E I S S?
W H I T V.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, now we know.
Cameron, forgive me, how do you spell your last name?
Uh N C, capital I, N T O S H.
Okay, thank you.
Can we get these guys on camera?
If if they want to be.
We're we're on, we're on live streaming here, so it's sort of strange to be talking to someone you can't see, so.
Yeah.
If you grab a couple of chairs, you can just.
Yeah, you can move it literally right around and we have a paper copy of your.
We'll discuss that.
I'll discuss.
Julia's over here.
Who are we um meeting with online?
Ah, so this is a publicly streamed meeting. We, there's only. Technically us on Zoom and then two people are viewing it on YouTube and I think one of them is me, so.
Okay.
I uh.
But it gets archived.
Hopefully. It gets archived, correct.
We're pretty good in front of the crowd, so.
Sounds good.
We can, yeah, update the viewers. I'll go live on Instagram. Did, did anyone tell, okay, you're prepared then somewhat.
Yes.
Did, did you get the gist of it, I suppose?
Yeah.
All right, we we um. So I own Mountain Dale Farm, the Hempstead.
Right.
Gapview Drive.
We've met before, Mark Linky once introduced us.
Absolutely, yeah. We, we are trying to, I I would say bring. Uh a little bit of the sustainable agriculture, agrotourism back to the Poconos or into the Poconos, if it wasn't here before. And one of the, one of the projects that we've been looking at besides the Hempstead. So we have forty five acres on Gapview Drive, it overlooks them, like the Snake and Animal Farm area.
Right.
We are trying to get a farmer's market going there and we already have the hemp farm. Uh produce, we have a CSA that's in, we're planning for. Uh one of the, well, one of the downsides of having a farm stand on your property is that people are always on your property. So, um, we bought eight acres on the Delaware River.
Right.
Um and it was, it's in between Charlie, the Kirkwoods there, and Inty, next to Inty, the Provenia Restaurant. We're actually, Charlie, the Kirkwoods own both sides of us, but we're kind of landlocked by them.
Right, there's there's one very small parcel that runs like right along the road.
Yes.
Right?
Yeah, so, um, the eight acres was was essentially a whole block here.
Right.
Um in between the the Shawnee condos and.
I'll show it to you later.
Okay, yeah, great, and.
It's right here.
Yes.
This is wrong, by the way, Kirkwood, who's this over here? This is Wyndham, but this is you.
Yes.
That's the the drive that goes.
That's the right away.
Yeah.
So they, um, they, they wanted to use the road to get down to the four houses on island, on the landing there. So basically in exchange, we have access to Delaware River, so we can use the landing ourselves, so. I liked that part of it and that was one of the main reasons that we decided to buy it, because we figured.
Beach.
Yeah, absolutely, I. I I was really, I was really interested in the fact that we could maybe have a farmer's market there. Uh there's a lot of, you know, people driving by on River Road. And we could have access, you know, to the river and, you know, give people maybe, you know, tours down to the river, whatever.
There's more traffic there than you think, it's about seven or eight thousand cars a day.
Incredible, incredible, yeah, and.
And lots of trucks too, right? Big trucks down that road too, I feel like, right?
Very few trucks, but.
Okay.
On weekends, it's a lot, sometimes it doubles.
Oh, no, 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 not not two oh nine, this is by my house, down right in front of the river. Yeah, he was thinking two oh nine.
Yeah.
But yeah, right in front of Kate's Road.
Yeah, yeah.
So, um, so I I purchased the property under a business name, which is Low Impact Solutions. And we were hoping to, uh, you know, develop and either put some greenhouses and a farmer's market on there. Uh I I had spoken to you and I'd spoken to Brian about the property and. Uh also spoke to Ken Wolfe and said, you know, what, what are my limitations? And, um, you know, what is the township, you know, potentially against for? Uh before we start making any plans, I'd like to just, you know, talk about it with you. And and Ken said the same thing, he said, you know, this is even a year ago, he just said, make a proposal, like if whatever it is that you want, bring it to us and, you know, we'll talk about it. That's the best we can do. I've heard a lot about the new economic development zone zoning potentially. Um wanted to know how that would potentially could affect us or, you know, one way or the other. Uh but my, my, my vision has changed. Over the last year for the property in that. I feel like we could offer a little bit something different, um, the farmer's market. As well as an eco village. And over the last year, I've been growing hemp and we've been looking for end user, end users for this hemp product. So, we grow hemp and we harvest the hemp and then we have a bunch of hemp that we have to do something with.
This is fiber industrial hemp too, not the.
Can't smoke this.
No, this is, and I can't smoke this, but in looking for end uses for the product, we started building with it and that's, I met Cameron. He is a hemp builder, um, he owns a company in Allentown and we're part of an organization called All Together now and we are. Actually all working together to find more uses for industrial hemp. So in working with Cameron, I thought, man, this is a really great opportunity to maybe do what we call an intentional. Uh residential village in, um, you know, in Menesink Hills in in East Strasburg along the river there. Um and still do the farmer's market as well. Um and a lot of these eco villages do just that, they have a a little garden and they'll have their own farmer's market. And of course, some of them are more geared towards vacation areas that have the short term rentals. Uh I think that we would. Uh steer away from that completely, even, you know, month rentals and just go for, you know, people that want to move to the Poconos. Want to live in an intentional community with sustainably built homes, small, intentional homes.
It's a great way to get in the press and and show, you know, the possibility.
Yeah, and what a setting to do it, I mean, in one of the most visually, you know, beautiful places on the East Coast, in my opinion.
Well, and you asked about the new enterprise. Well, when you asked about the new enterprise zone, the problem or the opportunities is, if you look at that map and the yellow parts of that map.
Yes.
That's all of the River Road corridor around where you are. We're planning to, um, introduce an amendment to add all of that to the enterprise zone, which we passed a couple of weeks ago. Which is really the, the two two oh nines, four four seven, that whole triangle. But so we want to add that to it because it really is commercial, even though, uh, historically, a lot of it's been zoned for residential.
Sure.
But it's commercial. Then we get to your property and we wanted to include that. But if you're going, first of all, if you look at it, it's one property, even though the road goes through the middle of it, it's one property.
Yeah.
If we add it, uh, you're fine in like farmer's markets or anything like that.
Yeah.
Then, but if you get to residential on it, then you're back and wanting to be R one. So, um, we don't know what to do. Do you want this? Do you not want it? Do you want to take half of it and go for, uh, what is it? A, uh, a division, so half of it is, is back and is, is stays in residential. But you have to go for a subdivision and land use.
And, and, and that's.
Complicated.
It is, it's complicated, but I think that it could be incredibly beneficial, um, to this, to the area, to that area. It's something that is progressive and, um, I hope could, could offer a really, uh, you know, like you said, an incredible opportunity to put it out to the public that we've kind of changed our building practices. I was having a conversation, Cam's, Cam's mother went to buy a new house recently and she said, yeah, we were gonna buy it, but it was, it was like one of those old Pocono houses. And, uh, I thought, God, what a stigma, you know, like, and we, and we really want to get away from that.
Well, remember this though, we were talking about permanent housing versus, um, let's call it, um, vacation housing.
Yeah.
If you were doing it as vacation housing where it was, uh, less than thirty-day stays, like a motel or something, then I think it fits into the, what we have is in the ED or enterprise zone.
Sure.
Then you don't have to do anything, then you're okay with farmer's market, you're okay with that. Once you get to over thirty days where it's permanent housing, um, then you, you get into something else. And, um, we, we have a.
That opens it up to a lot more.
We have an order, we have an ordinance against, um, Airbnbs, but we, in, that's, that's for residential zones. In, in the commercial zone, you can build a motel, well, what is a motel? It's something where you're staying less than thirty days.
Sure, sure.
Whatever you call it. So it's just, it's just something to think about where it's a lot less trouble. Because you don't have to go through a subdivision and land use.
People want to, to take part and like, you know what I mean?
You don't have to twist my arm on that, if it's, if it's easier, you know. No, no, if it's easier and my, my, my reasoning for even sending you the plans and coming here today was because I wanted to understand what the, the, the path of least resistance was for, for us and for the township and for, for everybody. And that's, um, that's where we originally started, but we knew that there was regulations and.
Well, we think of this too.
Yeah.
We don't have, um, let's say, a lot of, um, alternate vacation stay kinds of places. They're usually the motels on two oh nine.
Sure.
And let's say, a lot of motel rooms you wish were a lot better.
I agree.
And, um, we have one, um, bed and breakfast. And then we have the Shawnee Inn.
Sure.
There's, there's, uh, there's a few other places, but not much. And, um, someone was here a couple of years ago with a, I thought, a great plan to build a yurt village on top of the ski resort at Shawnee Mountain.
Wow.
And, uh, we, they even built one yurt up there just as an example. It never got going for a lot of reasons and one of those sewer and water and some point access. But the idea was, okay, if you're coming up here and you want something that's a different kind of vacation, um, habitation. That was it, well, you're talking about something that sort of fits into that too.
Yeah.
And I think personally, I think we desperately need those alternatives. And, and one thing is also interesting is Shawnee Inn and now has glamping, they've had that for about three or four years. They make more money in a glamping room than they do on a real room.
Believe that, yeah.
Judy's, uh, family, I, uh, we work with Judy Wicks out of Philadelphia, she's like a pioneer for farm to table. She also has a home here in, uh, in, in the Poconos. And I went and we visited her to talk about the eco village the other day and we're just kind of talking. She had her friends come to the Poconos and then go and stay in the glamping camp, um, at Shawnee and they said they loved it. But I agree, uh, the ecotourism is, is something that we've really been looking to kind of work with.
So are we.
The market, we thought that the farmer's market was a, a really great way of doing that. And we also thought that, you know, the eco village was, was something, and in other communities where eco villages have started, they've become huge attractions. Uh, people come, check them out, they want to know more about it. This was going to be kind of like a beta test for us on a very small scale. But if it works, we would look to the other acreage that we have to maybe do another one.
If you build it, I'd love to see you do a YouTube, uh, continuing serial documentary and, and how it's built, what's going on.
Absolutely.
We, because we need that kind of publicity around here, we do not have it. We have to depend upon, um, what people see on television stations in New York and Philadelphia. First of all, nobody under age of sixty watches linear TV anymore.
Right.
And secondly, it's, it's, well, what is it, they're advertising hotels and they're advertising, you know, going down the river and so forth.
Sure.
But it's not what you're talking about and yet this area is so filled with the possibility of ecotourism in. And it's like adventure tourism to figure things out of what nature's about here.
I agree.
Yeah.
So certainly people my age are looking for that, you know, the total experience, you know, one place, some sort of interesting, yeah. Some sort of, you know, amenities like that, you know, it's like, there's a lot of things that you could do on, on this property that, that'll entice.
And that's what Airbnb, that's the success that Airbnb is predicated upon is the experience, right?
And, and the only reason we don't have Airbnb is because we can't, um, uh, we can't control it.
Sure.
And the biggest problem is, uh, the people that live around it usually become the victims of it. Whether it's fireworks, whether it's loud parties, whether it's garbage.
Yeah.
And we can't control it.
Well, I live on Old Mill Road, um, so I, I, I understand that completely.
Yeah.
We have little homes all around us that seem to not be Airbnb, but they have different people there and, you know, it gets loud and. What can you do? So I, I, I know for sure if we were dealing with Airbnbers, we would be like that all the time. But the fact that this area is surrounded by those condos makes it, uh, very different.
Right.
For.
So do you want to take the subdivision, four acres off of, you know, to the one side and then.
Our only, our only.
We have to be contiguous in how we do the zoning, otherwise.
Well, if it's an E, if it's going to be considered an economic development zone.
Right.
Then we wouldn't have to change it at all, we would just put the plans in, put the farmer's market over here with the parking lot and then put the, the homes on the other side, that was, that was our plan just to keep it separate.
The, let's say, the short-term residences.
Yeah.
The motel, let's call it the motel rooms. Whatever you want to call it.
Eco, eco hotel.
Yeah.
Or eco hotel.
Eco hotel, there we go.
Eco hotel.
And that would be, that would be okay for, um, Airbnb, that, correct?
Well.
In that area?
Uh, Airbnb isn't, but motels are.
Okay.
So what's the difference?
Motels, hotels or inns are all allowed in the, uh, economic development zone.
Okay.
There's a number of interesting things.
You want to, you want to control the booking yourself anyway.
Yeah.
It's not a one-off.
Airbnb is basically a home owned by somebody.
Yeah.
And then rented out to other people.
This is.
This would be a business, yeah.
This is, yeah, this is different.
Yeah, this is much different.
And if you have two uses, that's the whole thing that's encouraged by the ED zone, is say, hey, if you want to have, you know, some housing, uh, in, in some form, you know, you can certainly do that and then have.
It can't be permanent housing, right?
Right, um, but that, but that's the option, if you choose to pick one side that you do want to have permanent housing community, then you could theoretically, I, I suppose, subdivide those.
That would be subdividing, yeah.
And then you could keep that, you could keep that R one and this is the ED zone if that's what's added in to the amendment.
I'm, I'm, like I said, I'm, I'm all for doing whatever is the, like, the easiest, the path of least resistance. And if it means, um, keeping it all as ED and then just putting in the plan for the farmer's market with the, you know, eco hotel, we're okay with that.
Well, I think, eh, for the future, if you, if you, if you do decide to join this, um, enterprise zone, then if something, if you want to redevelop it ten years from now, something else, you're in the commercial zone, you don't have to worry about it.
Sure, absolutely.
I think it, it becomes more valuable, look, it's right in the river.
Yeah.
It's very valuable for a lot of things.
Oh, trust me, we, my, yeah, when I saw this, uh, come up for sale, I was, I'm a, I'm a neighbor. I live across the street and I thought, you know, oh my gosh, I'd just love to put my own home there. I'd be tucked away by the river and, you know, forgotten about. But the farm, I, I started the farm venture and realized that, uh, I wasn't going to be doing anything like that anytime soon. Cause I'm at the farm, uh, you know, fifteen hours a day, so. But this, this area is in, you know, for me, this is my home and I think it's absolutely gorgeous. And we've picked, you know, that, that property basically is my, my front doorstep. So, um, we'd love to make it something, uh, that's, you know, lasts, that lasts, that is good for the area and not, um, one of these, uh, you know, Pocono beer neon sign type deals. Something that is more, you know, like I said, eco-friendly, um, you know, wholesome, uh, agrotourism type, uh, of a destination. And the farmer's market could be an all-year thing where we can, where we can do, you know, Saint Nick, um, you know, Christmas events. And, you know, you know, the, like, like the German.
Thing here.
Like, yeah, like the German, like I spend a lot of time overseas and the, the Kris Kringle marts and all that kind of stuff.
Germany.
Yeah, they're just really wonderful and I, they, I, I want that for my own neighborhood. So, um, that's, that was kind of the route that we were.
Well, and, and just, uh, to, to mention something that's, let's say, um, gets a similar kind of clientele. Look at the bakery in Delaware Watergate. It's probably the biggest business there. And why? It's something original.
Yep.
Something different, nothing around is like it, whether you're going in for a pie or you want barbecue outside.
Yeah. And it's some pretty darn good.
And it's attractive kind of people that are looking for something to do here.
Yeah, yeah. Well, that's, that, that makes me feel good. I, I also, I feel again, that the ability for us to kind of start and move quickly, uh, is there because it is town sewer, town water.
Right, well, it's not town, but it's, it's private Benwell.
Benwell, yeah.
It's there.
It's there, yeah, and I, and I spoke with Charlie and Charlie, uh, gave me the blessing with Benwell and said, when you need to get hooked up, just let us know.
He gave you another blessing if you bought it.
I'm sure, I'm sure. But yeah, I was, I was happy to have Charlie as my neighbor, um, I've known him for, for almost my life. And he was, uh, also happy to have me in there because I think that he maybe didn't get along with Willie for all those years as his neighbor. But again, we, we really want to do something that, uh, you know, makes a positive impact on.
Do it.
On that area, so we're gonna do it, yeah, that's great.
And I, I, let's say, you know, first of October or somewhere else, this will be, uh, in the, um, enterprise zone.
Yeah.
First of October.
Well, it's technically already in it, the zone, the zone's adopted and then it's, it's up to you to submit your, uh.
We haven't, we haven't adopted for this.
Oh, that's true, but that, that is a good.
Yeah.
We have more than a month, it, it takes a couple of days for the planning commission to review it and ours can meet at a work session in the county planning commission, they can do.
So it's just, but we, we need to do this not only because of the corridor, but, um, there's certain things that we left out or, or want to change in the original amendment, I think we're gonna put in this, so this is sort of a catch-all that we're gonna do.
Great.
But it'll be done this fall.
Great, and then, um, finally, and, and the reason that, uh, Cameron came along, in some of the building that we're going to be doing, we're going to be using, uh, this hemp creature is, is the name for it. It's, it's an insulation, uh, it's not structural. And what we were looking to do, uh, in all the communities across the United States that are going to be using this product as a building product, we're using European building code, uh, standards. And for each building product, usually the township says, they give the blessing on the eco, on the eco, you know, friendly, sustainable building product. And in place of US building standards, we have European building standards. And the township has to just say, yes, we accept that. Because in the United States, um, they don't exist yet. It is not a structural, um, composite, it's not a structural material, it is just insulation.
Well, but as long as it meets certain standards that our engineers feel are, are sustainable, what's the difference?
That's where we've had successes, basically showing them the information, we'll go to them with a detail with an architect that we've worked with that understands it and says, you know, it does X, Y, and Z things. And then, you know, usually they'll say, we're okay with that in rural areas, cities are a little bit different.
Well, you are.
Right. They'll say, okay, we'll give you a variance, um, you know, and, and again, it replaces a lot of things in the wall except for the frame. So the structural aspect, you know, as far as the code enforcement is concerned, they can come and do their inspections. It's, it's literally replacing everything else in the wall, um, drywall, insulation, you know, siding, house wrap, vapor barrier, all that kind of stuff. And you plaster it, so it's very natural, but it also, again, we're careful to pitch it as an insulation material because that's what it is, it does add some racking strength, we're not trying to prove that, we're just, you know, we're not asking you to let us frame them poorly or, or with less wood, it's just, you know, this is the material.
It's an eco-friendly idea and, you know.
Well, we're working.
Certainly no incentive for you to, to not be safe with it.
Right, right.
And it's fireproof, so.
Sure.
There's a lot of, there's a lot of wonderful. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, we can supply, like I said, we can supply what we have as far as American data and supplement it with European stuff and just make the, the calculations, you know.
Sure.
So they do everything that you value, we do our value, it's relatively the same thing.
Right, the only advice I give you, that's a lot, I don't know about it, I've just heard about it from all time, is just, don't dig too deeply.
Right, absolutely, absolutely, I've heard the same thing. Noted. We, we did a, uh, we did do an environmental study though, so before I bought it, I had, I, I paid for an environmental study. They came in, they did course, everything's fine.
Excellent.
That was, uh, that was contingent upon me buying it, of course. So, um, although Willie maybe did some things that he wasn't supposed to, um, he did a good job and they did, they did cover the property and we're good to go.
Well, that's great.
So building standards is really the biggest thing we're gonna have to work together on.
Sure, yeah, absolutely. And, um, I don't, I don't think that that is going to be an issue at all, um, because number one, you, we wouldn't be the first. It's being done all over the country, uh, it's a small variance, uh, and we're not skimping on the structural integrity of the, of the.
If you can put up a yurt, seems like you can put this up.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And again, when you put the hemp in there, when you finally put the hemp inside the wall, it looks like this wall, like any wall, but instead of insulation in there, it's just hemp, uh, it's mixed with lime, it does become fireproof. So if anything, we're building something much safer.
And, and the energy efficiency as well, so it's, it's naturally, you know, you're, you're saving anywhere from thirty to sixty percent on your cost of ownership via energy. So, you know, for the town, you're saying these are sipping utilities, you know what I mean, versus, um, traditional construction, which is very wasteful.
Versus, versus Pocono homes, old Pocono homes.
Classic quality homes.
We're, we are, we are, things are improving, I know that they are, so.
Absolutely.
Yeah, but that's great, I, um, I appreciate, uh, your, your time and the opportunity to speak with you.
Okay, what's the next step, when?
We want to start immediately, yeah. So, um, what we're gonna do and what I've actually, we've already paid for architects, um, from Vermont to help us design. He's a local guy, he, he graduated from East Stroudberg High School, a very good old friend of mine, his name's Rudy, uh, Poland. And he teaches a school in Vermont on sustainable building. So he's gonna design, uh, the homes for us, uh, in the market and, um.
The units, rental units.
The, the units, yeah, the, the units. And, uh, as soon as we get those set in stone, uh, we're going to pre-sell, um, well, the plan was to pre-sell the, the lots in there. I think what we'll do now, um, is potentially shift our focus towards, um, just getting them set in stone, exactly what the design's going to be, getting them signed off by the township and saying, we like this, this is what we want to see here. And we'll move forward with, uh, with getting them built.
And you've, you've got the highway cut of the road, is that good enough for you or not?
What's that?
You have the highway cut for, for the road that goes through the middle, is that good enough? You know, you're gonna want, you're, are you gonna want other highway cuts into it?
Off the highway, yeah.
There would be two main entrances. There would be two main entrances.
Um, so yes.
So, so the main entrance for the farmer's market would be a parking lot. Um, we, we'd put a parking lot right in the front. Um, and for here, it would just be a circular road. So one entrance, one exit. Uh, and it will go around the property like that and then, you know, just right out.
Because PennDOT is always the biggest um, stumbling block, obstacle for all of this, highway occupancy problem.
What we really hoped to do um, in order to ve- make both sides of the property accessible. Uh, was to put a bridge over top of Island Burger Landing, uh, pedestrian bridge.
Right.
Uh, very similar to the Menasink uh, Hotels Bridge. And what that does is um, there's more than enough clearance to, it's forty feet. Uh, Island Burger Landing obviously cuts down and the, and the property maintains the same level. Um, so there's more than enough clearance, but we wanted to put a pedestrian bridge that, that connects the two properties. So that you had farmer's market with public parking and then uh, units on the right with a, a cold, basically like a, a circle, circle drive.
Did you come off the main driveway though?
You, you couldn't, not, not easily.
Okay.
Uh, not without.
Slips down pretty quick.
It's because, it's all because of the drainage there. And you have to be careful about that drainage.
Yeah, sure. I wonder if you could um, somehow get an easement with Wyndham and come off, I think it's called Iklees Driver.
On the bottom.
On the north side, or on the upside.
Yeah.
And use that as a, as a northern entrance.
Totally, totally able to do that. There's a small, um, right here is relatively flat. Uh, you'll, you'll start to see that there is a bit of an incline, uh, because they did kind of, in order to keep the property flat, they had to build up. And that was the, that was the whole, the whole point. So you have, you have a bit of a ledge that comes right down here. Whenever you cut into a ledge, there's more drainage issues. Right now, they spent a hundred and twenty thousand dollars and two thousand uh, to take care of the erosion and sediment control. On this property. Um, so I don't wanna, I don't wanna mess with any of it.
Sure, sure.
I wanna keep it exactly like it is. Um, and if there is an issue with an entrance over here. Then that would be the easiest uh, answer, is coming off of the Wyndham.
Well, if it's possible, maybe you should talk to um, Richard Walter at Wyndham just to, just uh, tell him what you're doing because he's. He, he, he's the general manager there right now. And uh, since he's got properties on both sides of you.
Yeah.
Might be a nice courtesy call.
Absolutely, absolutely. And I um, I, uh, yeah, so it is Wyndham that, that owns this condo.
Yeah, saw Wyndham on both sides.
Okay. And then the, the Delaware uh, which is flood zone down on the bottom, is that township or is that?
I think, I think it's, it's Kirkwood Shawnee.
Okay.
Yeah, I think so.
I don't think the township is anything down there.
Okay.
We can always check GIS, but I don't, I don't think we own property right there.
Well, I definitely, um, definitely set up.
What, what's that one little island of property that is attached to, you know?
That's ours.
Yeah.
Takes no sense. I'll never understand it. So I, I tried to understand it and I, 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 I spoke with Mrs. Schmidt.
Um, it looks like a gallbladder attached.
You know, I, I don't know. I, I, I went, I walked the property and it, it just makes no sense. So, um, one day.
Road right-of-way thing, some sort of land deal that was done when they wanted to build the road.
Yeah, and the way that that road winds through the property, I mean, it's, it's all, you know, on the, on the deed. It says, in exchange for use of the road, um, any, anybody that owns this property has the uh, ability to use the landing. So we have the right-of-way and.
Ooh, I wonder, I wonder if it doesn't have to do something with the, the storm, the uh, storm water management. Cause that's probably where all of that water is turning and washing out. So they were like, we're not fixing this anymore. It's all water coming off your property.
Yeah, it's yours. It's your problem. Yeah, potentially. Um, but it was fixed. There's a big cyclone.
Oh, yeah, it's beautiful. There's a lot of, there's a lot of good storm work.
And all the riprap is put in, so I.
Quarry rock.
I looked at that and I thought, okay, this was done once. Let's not uh, open up a can of worms here and try and do anything crazy. We're only gonna develop the land that was um, purposely left or created, you know, built up. And anything behind it. Because we're so close to the Delaware, just let it be.
Sure.
Well.
Makes all the sense.
I would, um, as soon as you have some kind of a plan, start pushing towards PennDOT to see.
Okay.
What you're up against as far as a, as a hop.
Sure.
Highway access on both sides. And then also maybe the conservation district as far as MS four problems with stormwater.
Yeah, yeah.
These both seem to be stumbling blocks, so kinds of things.
Well, we're, yeah, again, that's why we're here is so that we can try and figure out exactly, um, and it's, we're never gonna know. I'm sure. We can, we can only be as prepared as we can be and there'll be, there'll be roadblocks along the way. So.
Do it.
Um, what was the, what was the Wyndham?
Richard Walter, W A L T E R.
Richard Walter?
Yeah, general manager. Just say, I, I told you to, you, you two should at least meet.
Sure.
There's me.
I know you are.
Okay.
What was the other, the MS four thing?
That's um, the conservation district. That's MS fours, the, you know, stormwater. Plans. Okay. Let me see if I got his number here.
Do I wait to give out, unless it's a public number, do you want to uh, adjourn first?
Well, yeah, we'll, I will write it, write it down for you.
No problem. I have uh, I have some contacts from the conservation district, so, so that's, that's okay.
Oh, the conservation district number you can give us.
Definitely.
Okay. Anybody got a small piece of paper?
I don't really need any of this stuff.
Take it off of the agenda.
And yeah, so we were um, excited also to call it um, the Experiment Mills. Um, as you know, I, maybe you don't know, but that was, when I bought the farm, our farmhouse is um, two hundred and something years old.
Small.
And uh, all of the uh, all of the papers I found in the attic were uh, addressed to. Two, three, three Experiment Mills, Pennsylvania.
Oh, wow.
And so I went online, I looked it up and this whole area was called Experiment Mills.
Wonder why?
Uh, it being, well, because of all the mills that were here. And there was a bunch of agricultural uh, experimentation that was going on in this area. I mean, even the Shawnee, all the Shawnee flats right here, uh, they were in the eighteen hundreds, nineteen hundreds. They were developing agricultural equipment in this valley. So um, or in the river. But so, pretty, pretty interesting. So that's why we called, we decided to call it Experiment Mills.
Great.
Um.
Well, in Shawnee, in the little Shawnee village, there's um, what was originally, not originally, but one time the post office here. Which is on the, if you're going north on the left side of the road across from the general store. And that was a mill.
They're, they were everywhere. They were, there was five within, you know. Pretty neat. Great, great history here. So excited to uh, excited to work with everybody and I'm looking forward to getting this moving. I have to get kidney surgery tomorrow. It's when I have four kidney stones and um, they're massive. And I spent uh, I spent eight years in Iraq, uh, you know, doing the de-mining and apparently they call Iraq part of the Stone Belt. Because when you're there, you're mostly dehydrated and you, Americans especially, cause we're not used to it. Um, spend a lot of time in the Middle East, come back with kidney stones. And I came back with four massive kidney stones. So I'm gonna be um, stuck at home for two weeks, but that gives me a lot of time to, to plan. So. We'll be uh, we'll be in touch, uh, hopefully uh, over the next two weeks and let you know how we're making out.
That'd be great.
Um, if uh, if possible, I don't know what the uh, rules are, but we would be uh, interested in putting up. Uh, some kind of a sign with our name on the property that says, coming soon, uh, Experiment Mills, uh, Farmer's Market and Eco Village.
Okay, but you're okay with going uh, towards the um, enterprise zone then?
Yes.
Okay. Take that along if you want. It's not accurate because they, they screwed up one thing.
Who's excited?
This is Wyndham, but actually uh, Charlie Kirkwood's property is this little area here. So in other words, that connects this, this.
That's, and here too, yeah.
Yeah, and this should be just blank in the middle.
Okay.
This is, in other words, it comes up here, this is all his. And this, this is, this is not. So they got the wrong, the yellow in the wrong place.
Okay. Well, yeah, we were really excited about the, you know, the new zoning and. Happy to be a part of it and hopefully we can make it a successful operation.
Absolutely.
Um, again, thank you very much.
Yeah, cheers, cheers.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
If there's anything that comes up that you think we should know, please.
Really quick, um, concerning the sign, you know, our Hattori's outing officer, Ken Wolf.
Yeah.
Um, he's on vacation until the end of this week, so he'll be back. Um, but we can give you his phone number and his email and get you guys in contact. I've got your email, so I'll send you out the information as well, okay? And get you guys in contact about that.
Excellent. And um, when, yeah, when you send me an email, um, you can give me, uh, just kind of include everybody here and we'll send. Cameron can send some of the information on the hemp crete and uh, the other buildings and villages, just that we've been looking at.
Yeah, we can make sure they're engineered, building codes and so on. She's that, she's that beforehand.
Yeah, that's, that would make.
Should have that conversation sooner than later.
Before um, before we come to finalized uh, design with the architect, I really would like to speak with the engineer.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you very much. Nice to meet you.
Likewise. Yeah, we put in a grant, so hopefully we don't have a box the next time uh, we uh, for our tripod, next time we see you. Thank you.
Okay, moving right on.
Met one of them before.
Are we gonna talk about the zoning hearing board membership?
Yeah, we can do that. Okay. So, uh, long story short, we have three members on our five-member zoning hearing board right now. Um, as far as I can tell going through the minutes, um, all of those zoning hearing board member terms that expire. So just like our solicitor suggested with the planning commission, um, we should appoint them at staggered year terms to expire at the reorg. So we can re-appoint and revisit just like that. Um, at this point, um, I'm, we're still researching the status of the Parks Commission. Um, so if you guys are okay with this, I'd like to wait to advertise for the vacancies. Um, until I know the status of the Parks Commission also, just so we can save a little bit of money on the advertisements because they're so expensive. Um, I'll also in the meantime, reach out to our current zoning hearing board members, see if they're interested in still staying on the zoning hearing board. Um, and then go from there. If we don't get any interest on, um, you know, the additional vacancies at that point. We can determine if we need to reduce down to a three-member board.
Do we wanna redo, we, do we want to reach out to them? I don't know, most of them.
I like to stick with the precedent.
Of whether or not we do, it would be a common professional curse.
Yeah, I, I'd like to, to see that, give them the chance to send us letters of interest like, like the planning commission did.
Okay.
And then it'll be the board's prerogative to make those appointments by majority.
Cool. So I'm hearing same uh, status.
Would you like, would you like me to move to, to table it and tell uh?
Uh, it's not really a, a thing that you guys.
Just a discussion. Okay, that's fine.
Get this uh, finding of fact and hey, this is what we're doing.
Right, that sounds good. Do you have anything uh, else or can I make a motion to um?
Yeah, you.
Fishing pier discussion, if you wanna do that.
Yeah, uh, I wanted to touch base with you guys also on the fishing pier discussion. Uh, we received an email from Melissa Kruger on Monday about forms that we needed to have submitted to DCNR. To make sure that the grant for the fishing pier would be accepted for the DCNR, so we could get this all moving. Um, there are two forms, the certification of title and the certification of compliance with bid requirements, both of which need to be signed by our solicitor. Um, he hasn't had the opportunity to respond to the email yet, but just to cover our bases, um, I'm asking you guys to basically say, yes, Ronan. You're allowed to sign these as long as you're okay with signing them. Um, and then we'll get him to sign them. He's here for the planning commission meeting tomorrow. Just so we can keep this moving forward.
We're in agreement on that.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we allow our solicitor to sign the fishing pier uh, documents for DCNR.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Bills to be paid, we have no bills. Public comments?
We.
Well, I'll only make one comment. Uh, this session, this afternoon with Dr. Khan and then um. Eric White, it's, it's been more like an afternoon talk show.
Well, it was certainly good to hear those ideas and you affirm that Smithfield's a moving place.
Yes, absolutely. So uh, tune in again next week. How do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So we can motion that we adjourn the meeting at five eighteen.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're all secure. Done.